Let's call the meeting to order. Welcome to the second meeting of the month for Sylvania Township Board of Trustees. Today is Tuesday, April 18th. And will you call the roll, Dave?
Yes, Mr. Generali.
Here.
Mr. Mahoney.
Here.
Mr. O'Grandle.
Here.
Mr. O'Grandle.
Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any doubt, in its essence, and for all. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the March 27th special meeting. I'll move approval.
Second.
Mr. Generali.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle.
Yes. Next item is any deletions or additions to the agenda? Dave? Nothing?
No.
Oliver, you have anything?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Next item is hearing of the public for agenda items. I don't see anyone. Think we can pass that up. Next item on the agenda is the Road and Service Department. Mr. Nash.
All right, Rob. I have quite a few items. I'll go through them fairly quick. First item, 7.1, is the quarterly report. Some highlights down under the construction. We did complete the parking lot projects. Bergman come back, did some repairs that were necessary. So those were completed. Have completed quite a few ditch projects, so we're looking pretty decent in those. Those are mostly reimbursements through Stormwater Utility, so it's a little cost to the township. Working on our sixth route training, trying to get that down to our turnaround times around four and a half, five hours versus eight hours on a plow route. So that's the intent. We're working on that next training. As you can see, the Service Department with the numbers for costs and about 175 work orders for the quarter. And if you don't have any questions, I'll just keep moving on that.
Let's move ahead.
The next item, 7.2, is the joint cooperation agreement between the city and the township. It's just on there for, to make you aware that is in the office for your signatures and if you have any questions on it. This is just for us to go into an agreement to do a joint application for the OPWC project, Corey Road, next year.
I like the part that you added in the city.
Yeah.
I think that's, you know, that wrote both jurisdictions.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, I'll move Resolution 20, uh, 2023 for the joint cooperation agreement between the city, township, and the county.
I don't think that's a resolution.
It is not a resolution. It's just a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have it on the resolution. It's just an agreement.
I got it. I signed it.
It's just for public information on there. The next item, 7.3, is a Resolution 23054. This is authorized authorization to award bid and enter into contract for the 2023 Sylvania Township OPWC Improvement Project. Gurkin was the lowest best bidder. This project is mainly in the Twelve Lakes and the Forest Lake subdivisions.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23054, Authorization to Award the Bid and Enter into Contract for the 23 Sylvania Township OPWC Road Improvement.
Second.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, 7.4, is Resolution 23055. This is to approve the plan and advertise for bid for the 2023 Sylvania Metamora Road Sidewalk Project. This project connects existing sidewalks along Sylvania Metamora with the roundabout at Midshaw. This is, would be the only connection for the whole north side of Sylvania, west of Midshaw. So the Road and Bridge Fund in the county and in the township does not fund these types of projects, so this is going to be, the money will be used from the American Rescue Fund Plan. There is a title sheet in there and it's just informational. The title sheet needs edited. I just spoke with Mike Stormer from the Engineers Office and we saw a typo on there. He's going to get that corrected and get it over to us probably tomorrow for signature. So I may ask at some point this week if you could stop back by and sign the title sheet so I can get it back to them. But the resolution is just to approve the plan, which is, which is in its entirety is correct, and then advertise for bid. And I have this being advertised on the 20th of this month.
My question is, the typo is that, I'm concerned about the maintenance, the way the wording was.
Yeah, he's going to remove that from the title sheet. We just spoke with him, Oliver and I, on the phone.
So how's the maintenance?
The maintenance will be assigned to the county. It'll be the county right away. They, he indicated that they could use general fund to maintain it as far as clarity.
I think he has, I think he has to use general fund.
Yes.
Not, not the engineer fund.
Yeah, and that would have to be approved by the County Commissioner, so that's what he indicated verbally on the phone.
I don't know. I, I'm a little confused on the maintenance.
The maintenance would not be, would not fall, according to the Engineers Office, would not fall on the township.
Well, I, I get that. I don't know. I'm a little hesitant on this. Could, could we table it?
We could hold it.
One more meeting?
What would, what would make you not hesitant? What would you need for, from their, from their office?
Well, I hate to sign the plans, you know, where our signature's at.
Right.
Because the way I read it...
That's what he's going to be removing from the plan. So my intent is to, because, once we saw that, was not to pull it because he did indicate that he would edit that and remove that language from the title sheet. If we, we can, if we don't advertise, it just pushes this back even further. If the title sheet is not edited to, I guess you're, what makes you comfortable, then we wouldn't sign the title sheet and the plan would, we would have to just remove the plan.
We'd still have to lay it.
So if you'd like to table it, we could table it and we'll put it on the next agenda.
No, I guess...
If you're telling me that you're, you're telling me that you're going to go ahead, this is going to get removed and we're going to have to come back and re-sign it anyways. If it's not removed, we're not going to come in and sign it.
But if we approve this...
We're not, we're not approving it, are we?
Well, I don't know.
Oh, you're approving it with the language, the new language.
With the change. I, I guess we could approve it and...
Whatever you want.
If it doesn't look comfortable, we won't sign it.
Doesn't matter to me.
I don't want to hold you up, but, oh.
I mean, there's times that we sign, we sign before we approve it.
The resolution authorizes us to advertise for bid, which would be on the 20th. The title sheet would be forthcoming tomorrow, so if he does not provide the title sheet, and then I could, I could email you a copy of what that looks like, then we could not advertise. I could just pull the...
Why don't we just change it a little bit and say we'll approve and advertise for bid? We won't say approve the plan till we see the change. I don't want us being responsible somehow for maintenance.
Let's just pull it and we'll, we'll get clarification.
Now, we could do the maintenance from the general fund, but I don't like that either.
Oh, the county's offering.
I prefer that we don't have any maintenance or any, and Mike indicated that we would have not, would not have no, once it was, the project was complete, we'd have no stake in the sidewalk and no interest in it. But we could pull it and we can get that title sheet cleared up.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve and advertise for bid on Sylvania Metamora Road Project. Take the plan out until we see it and I'll sign it.
So we're going to just edit the resolution to say authorization to advertise for bid for the Sylvania Metamora Road Sidewalk?
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes.
I don't want to sound silly here, but like that bike path on Sylvania Avenue from Howland Sylvania to Corey, does the county maintain that?
Not that I'm aware of.
They're supposed to. Well, they do maintain it.
If there's a sinkhole or something.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they'll fix the sinkhole. They resurfaced it a few years ago, but do they pass, no?
This sidewalk was a compromise with the Engineers Office. They did not want to put a mid-block in. When the Engineers Office changed leadership, they changed the direction. I had a plan in place to put a crosswalk in further down west of Midshaw to, so that those residents could safely cross to the multi-use path to get down to Pay Center Park or get ice cream or go to Mary Bear's or whatever. When the new leadership came in, they didn't like that plan that we had in place and they pretty much halted it, and I just kept asking for more compromise. What, what can we do so the north side of Sylvania Met can get down to a safe crosswalk? And I, I do think this plan is much safer. You're at lower speeds in a cross, in the roundabout than if you were doing a mid-block. Mid-block, they're doing 50 and they got to come to a halt or, you know, or at least slow down, and there's no guarantee because they were not going to put in a hawk signal like they have on Haroon. They were just going to put on a beaking flashing light like they have at Pay Center, which many of you know, a lot of complaints about that, that people don't stop, so. This was our compromise to get them down there safely.
See, there's, we shouldn't, we shouldn't complain too much. I'm still working on trying to get something done in Flanders.
Working on that.
You've got somebody working for you, though. That lady who was here, I mean, she seemed like she was going to spearhead it for you.
Sammy, you get the edit on the 23055?
I did.
Okay. All right. Did you guys approve that?
We did.
Did we both? Yeah, we called the roll, didn't we, on that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
All right. Next item, 7.5, Resolution 23059. This is authorization to install temporary no parking signs for the Glass City Marathon on April 23rd. The Glass City Marathon is scheduled to go through Sylvania Township, mostly portions of Farm Brook Subdivision and the Police Department, and the organization requests us for safety purposes to put these temporary no parkings up and put in some barricades and other items up on those roadblocks.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23059, Authorization to install temporary no parking signs for the Glass City Marathon.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, 7.6, is our Resolution 23060. This is authorization to enter into contract for uniform services. These other mechanics uniforms currently were with UniFirst. We've been doing some research and we've found a better outfit, better quality, and more service for about a half the cost. So the corporation, Syntas Corporation, that would be replacing it, and they are awarded a OIBAS cooperative purchasing program, so we would, we would rather go off of quotes on it. So it would reduce all department's cost on that item. Just go with that.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23060, Authorization to enter into a contract for uniformed services.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes.
Thank you. I have 7.7, Resolution 23066. This is authorization to award bid and enter into contract for the 2023 Crack Seal Program. This is, was a cooperative agreement with Lucas County that you set out to bid, and the lowest best bidder was a company called National Industrial Maintenance, ending on $84,295, in which $65,150 of that is Lucas County share, and once, we got a deal with Lucas County.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23066, Authorization to award bid and enter into contract for the 23 Crack Seal Program.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes. And Rob, who are they out of? National Maintenance or...
I believe they're out of Chicago.
Chicago?
Yeah. Illinois or Chicago.
Wow, okay.
They got quite a few of the projects this year. Next item, 7.8, it's Resolution Number 23066. This is authorization to participate in the ODOT code salt contracts for 2023.4. There's a lot of language there, but it's a required cut and paste onto the resolution, basically indicating that we have only a certain time to submit the request, and a certain time to withdraw the request, and we must take 90% of the salt we order, and we can take up to 110, but we can get additional 10% if needed. We don't know the pricing on that yet, so the contracts will order them.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23066, Authorization to participate in the ODOT code salt contracts for 23.
I think it's 68.
Oh, I'm sorry, 68.
I couldn't see that either. Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes.
Thank you. Last item, 7.9, this is Resolution 23069. This is authorization to purchase two used F-250 trucks. Originally, earlier this year, January, I had a resolution that I will, this is approved dissent, to authorize the purchase of two new F-250s. Fortunately, Ford has shut down their fleet purchasing due to supply and demand. They can get a lot more money out of a platinum F-250 at the same price as a work truck F-250. So they discontinued discounts in the fleet service orders. Fortunately for us, we're working locally with Runes Ford, and they were able to find us two virtually new. One's got 1,500 miles on it and one's got 4,000 miles on it, and they're set up, they're, they're comparable trucks except they're white. So we got estimates to have them wrapped or painted into our colors. So I'm asking to purchase these two used trucks from Runes Ford, one's for $48,585 and one's for $47,985, and also to sell on dub deals our 2006 and 2007 trucks that these two will be replacing. Mr. Generali?
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23069, Authorization to purchase two used F-250 trucks and sell to existing trucks.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
All right, I just have one resolution. Resolution Number 23067. This is the certify lateral transfer list for the hiring of police officer. We've got, I think, six or seven.
Where's he from? Or she...
They're all from different, where they...
Oh, you got more than one?
Yeah, no, this is, this isn't to hire yet. This is just, we have to certify the list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That we can draw from for lateral transfer.
Excuse me. I thought it was a hire.
And I think we have some good candidates, and I'll talk to that a little bit more about that in a couple of minutes.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23067, Resolution to certify the lateral transfer for hiring of police officers.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, Oliver.
Hi, Lord.
Could you trust these fiscal offices in the first item under the administrative category is Resolution 23056, Authorization to remove an insecure, unsafe, structurally defective building or buildings located at 2309 Reddington Park. This is a property that has been in front of the trustees recently. Included in the packet is a letter of assessment from the property department dated March 6th. And to facilitate the review of this issue, the township also used the services of a structural engineer, Wilmington Lee at LKNL Engineers, and his opinion, the damage of the structure is such that it's unsound and irreparable. Following the analysis of the structural engineer administration and prosecutor's office met with the property owner on March 30th, in discussions with the property owner, they indicated that it was possible we would be looking toward demolition for the next 90 days, and that they were also looking at potentially selling the property. So based on the discussion with the property owner, we indicated to them that we would bring this resolution forward so that we can continue to turn this township site not necessarily for, based on the next year's schedule of the election. So this would provide the ability of the township to move forward if this is approved. Have any similar questions?
I have a question. So if, my concern is the, you know, the 89th day, and then this guy goes and sells it, and then I'm going to drag down another 90 days. Can we put a lien or can we put on something on the property that would stick that if the new buyer comes in, he's, his window is the 90-day period? I, I just, I can just see this thing dragging out six months, and these people next door, I talk to the Browns, I mean, they're just so upset about this, and I just don't, I just, I'd like, I don't know what the teeth will be on this. I don't know how much teeth there is on this. If they go ahead and start selling it, selling it, selling it, before we know it, we're a year into the, they keep selling it off to another party, and now we're, you know, a year later, we're still talking about it.
Right, absolutely. That was, that was part of the, of the thought process, bringing the resolution forward as soon as possible at the first regular meeting after we've got the property owner, so that we could start this process. We would be able to send the required notification to the property owner. They would have a certain amount of time, I believe it's 20 days, to send notifications to fiscal officer, if they requested hearing. Barring the hearing after that, we would be able to start taking the steps to demolish the property. We would have ongoing discussion with the property owner. We had a lot of attempts to reach them. They, they weren't successful until we sent them the, the information about potentially the demolition of the structure. So that's part of the thought process in bringing it forward now. We would like to make sure that if they do sell the property, that there's nothing that bothers the process then.
My, my concern is, okay, they go and sell it, so the new buyer isn't going to know that this time clock is on. Is there something that Barak could draft up that we can record on behalf of this property so if it's showing, if there's some teeth to it?
Yeah, if there is, we'll, we'll put them in, we'll do that, but I'm not exactly sure about that.
Okay, no problem. Yeah, all good.
You satisfied?
Yeah, I'm good.
If there's no other questions, I'll move Resolution 23056, Authorization to remove the insecure, unsafe, and structurally defective buildings at 2309 Wilmington Park.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes.
Next resolution is 23057, the resolution to secure an unsafe and insecure building located at 6047 and 6049 Reddick Drive. This is another property that has been considered and acted upon previously by the trustees. The back of the property was secured and was boarded up based on the prior action. We did receive additional citizen concerns about the structure, and the police chief checked the property and determined that the front entry doors, the door at 6047 Reddick was locked. However, the door at 6049 Reddick is unable to lock, and that's due to the door that's too damaged, the structure that's too damaged, and the doormat mechanism being broken. So discussing this with prosecutor's office, we're bringing this resolution forward at this time so that we will be able to have it forward to secure the front. Unlike the back where we boarded it up, given the front border and its visual impact from the road, we did clarify that we would be able to either replace it or replace the locking mechanism just for visual appearance from the road, but this is approved.
Any questions?
Thank you.
And I know we all appreciate your follow-up on these two items. I'll move Resolution 23057, a resolution to secure the unsafe and insecure building located at 6047 and 6049 Reddick Drive.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes.
Next resolution would be to appoint myself to the Lucas County Land Bank Reutilization Corporation Board of Directors. I have served as Lucas County Township Representative to Lucas County Land Bank Board since August 2020. At which time I've occupied a position that had been filled by former administrators earlier. This would be for a two-year term, starting June 14th, and if this were to be approved, would also require the approval of the Shrimpo Township, which I intend we are preparing resolutions in accordance with that.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23058, a resolution to appoint Mr. Turner to the Lucas County Land Bank Reutilization Corporation Board of Directors.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes.
And final resolution is 2370. The resolution is set and adjusted 2023 meeting schedule and starting time, and if I were writing this over, it would simply drop off the word "starting time." This is only in regards to the meeting schedule. This is to clarify that the meeting on May 2nd would be a regular meeting. The resolution that was adopted by the board at the beginning of the year did indicate that if there were primary election day, on the normal day, a regular meeting would be pushed to the following day, but there's no local, within the township, no local election on May 2nd, so this would clarify that the meeting is a regular meeting, and also indicates that the meeting normally held on November 7th would be held on November 8th, the following Monday due to the general election. And finally indicates that the regular meeting that would be held on July 4th, which is a Tuesday, would be moved to July 5th, and also preserves the first Thursday Tuesday of each month at 5:00 with zoning impacted.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23070, a resolution to set and adjust the 2023 meeting schedule, but the times will remain the same.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Grandle?
Yes. Thank you, Oliver.
Thanks, Oliver.
Dave?
Yes. I have the March 20, 2023 analysis of our various funds, and as you can see from the memo that was sent out, the township actually is doing very well on revenue collections and that, and exceeding in many instances by 10 and almost 20%, what we had expected to receive by this time. And so keep our fingers crossed, it keeps kind of going this way, although probably unlikely in that, but it's very good revenue collections in the township, and, but we always focus on the, we focus a lot on the expenditures, and as you can see, the mean would be about 25%. We're about a quarter of the way done with the year, and we are only slightly over in the police fund right now by a couple percentage points, and that's, I don't, we don't really get concerned about that, but, and the general fund is good, Road and Bridge Fund is good, so we're very pleased, and our expenses are holding the line in that, but our revenue happens to be up. Good news for the township. So that's what I have to say on the March analysis of our various funds. There's a little curveball here on our resolutions because in the agenda, they are, start out with Resolution 23065, and that, and then it goes down to 064, 069... And then it goes down to 064, 063, in reverse order there for some reason on our agenda and that. And I'm going to start actually because my memo that I have and that you received starts at 061, 23-061, which is actually at the bottom. It says 10.6. But that might, you know, let's go that way if you guys are okay.
No problem.
And Resolution 23-061 is to establish a new revenue account and fund for leaf and brush disposal for refunds and reimbursements. So it has to do with our leaf and brush pickup, which we're in the midst of right at this moment. And my phone just rang here. That's terrible. Oh, I took a picture. It's potential spam anyway.
Took a picture of your pocket?
Yeah, I was getting excited here. Took a picture of my paper here. So we have a motion on this.
Sure. I'll move... If there's no questions for Mr. Simcoe, I'll move Resolution 23-061 to establish a new revenue account for leaf and brush pickup.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Next resolution, 23-062, to transfer monies between various funds, mostly relating to our four major funds and EMS matters. And you've had a chance to review this in your memo and that that we sent out to you. And so I would ask for approval of Resolution 23-062.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23-062, transfer of funds for various accounts.
Second. Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
And Resolution 23-063 is to approve a then-and-now certificate. And you can see that, and I think we all got a memo on this, how Vision is now being billed to us. And this bill, we just received it for January, February, and March premiums. And so I would ask for a... Oh, we need a then-and-now for a Bergman account, which has to do with finishing up our parking lot improvements that we had. So I'd ask for approval of Resolution 23-063.
If there's no questions, I'll move 23-063, approve payment of a then-and-now... I'm sorry. Yeah, then-and-now purchase certificates.
Second.
Calling to roll, Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
And Resolution 23-064 is appropriation for unencumbered balance for the OPW C loan payment, training advance out, Police Department, and salaries regarding our grant.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23-64. Township appropriations from the unencumbered mallets.
Second.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
And lastly, 23-065 to advance back $600-plus dollars in advance and grants to advance back remaining advance for bulletproof vests. And this is done generally every year. We have to pay in advance for these things, and then these funds get advanced back. So I'd ask for approval of 23-065.
If there's no questions, I'll move Resolution 23-065, advance funds for bulletproof vests.
Second. Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Hearing of the public for non-agenda items. I don't see anyone, so can you still do it if you're listening in? Nothing? Okay. Thank you. Next item is open discussion and report. Do you have anything, John? You?
I do nothing. I do not.
My only comment is, Oliver, can you give us the clock back? I keep looking up there. There's no clock there, so you're going by my watch now, which could be dangerous. All right. Next item is the executive session. And I'll move to go into executive session for collective bargaining and personnel dismissal, discipline, and compensation. And the elected officials will be joined by the police chief, assistant chief, and the administrator. Oh, and the time...
5:30. I say 5:36.
That sounds good. 5:36.
Second.
Okay. And Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. Thank you.
I don't know. It's all good. Whatever you come up with. Thanks for checking.
I'll move to come out of executive session at 5:55.
Second. Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. And I'll move Resolution 23-071, a resolution approving a separation waiver and release agreement.
Second. Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. And I'll move to adjourn at 5:56.
Second. Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. You stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.